Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 7, 2025 special meeting of Glendale's Charter Review Committee. Mr. Chair, would you like roll call?
Please.
Committee members Durham.
Here.
Flower.
Here.
Caribbean.
Harutunian.
Present.
Karpetian.
Here.
Menisarian.
Here.
Meek.
Here.
Megardichian.
Present.
Miller.
Present.
Povolitis.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
And you.
Present.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to read the report of the secretary.
Thank you.
Report of Recording Secretary reposting of Agenda. The agenda for the August 7, 2025 special meeting of the Charter Review Committee was posted on August 6, 2025 before 5:00 p.m. on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
First thing on our agenda is Oral Communications, but I did want to mention that I heard from the staff that Ani is going to be a little late, but she will be joining us sometime around 5:30. So with that in mind, looking at the rest of the agenda, if there's no objection, I'm going to put item four ahead of item three. That is, item four being the council compensation item before we get to the issue of districts and separate mayor. So with that, Oral Communications. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to items not on the agenda?
Actually, it's special meeting, it has to be on the agenda.
Well, we listed in Oral Communications, Mr. Chair, just because this was originally intended, as you know, to be a regular meeting.
All right, any item within our subject matter jurisdiction then? Yes.
Mr. Chair, there are three requests from the audience.
Okay.
Beth Brooks.
How many, how much time?
Three.
Three? Three minutes?
Thank you for letting me speak. My question is if you could put in the charter, or if there is something about a total number of meetings for council meetings that should take place during the year, because, you know, in the past month or so, we've had, you know, two a month, in the past two months, we've only had two a month. So I'm wondering if you could at least have something where there's a total number so they make up some meetings that have had to be canceled. So that's my first question, because I think that's very important, because it really pushes back on things that need to be voted on, or money that needs to be spent. My other suggestions for the charter are, I know you don't come up with, like, committees or commissions, but that there should be some ethics rules beyond just you can't take money or be employed within a certain time of being elected council member, which I actually think should be, should be added, it should be years, or you shouldn't be able to take a job after. I think it should be more like the way the federal government should do it, at least that you're not a lobbyist, you're not in the Board of Directors, I think you have to include Board of Directors as well, that it can't just be that you're employed by Also, for, for elections, I think it would probably benefit the city if, sorry, Mr. Garcia, if you had elected city attorneys and treasurers, I think that would be an important step in the right direction. You have unelected, I mean, Suzie Abajian is elected, I don't see why the city attorney and the treasurer shouldn't be elected. And, you know, anything, I think that you, I know you also don't vote on the mayor ordinances, which have been, you know, a terrible problem. I don't know if the charter can get involved in anything with that, and this will be discussed later about selecting a mayor, but I don't know if that would be included in the charter in any kind of way, as opposed to it being ordinances that can change often. It's more fixed, I believe, if it's in the charter, I don't know. Maybe that's not the case. I'm ignorant about that, but I feel that that's very important, given the way the last two, you know, elections went, if it could be something in the, in the charter that makes that more fixed and not so open to interpretation. And that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Herbert Milano.
Members of the Charter Committee, I want to bring up a topic that I think is incredibly important for the Charter Committee to, to consider, in addition to all the usual things that you're working on. The, last week, I've, I attended the audit committee, and I think I was the only speaker there, and I think I've been the only speaker in the last five years. And because I had many important topics to discuss, I requested five minutes. The chair said, you can have three, or you're scheduled for three, and I said, no, I'd like five, if you could. The chair looked at the city attorney, and she said, no, three minutes, we are busy. In my mind, to my mind, if the chair of a committee must defer on something as simple as giving someone two extra minutes, can this person have the authority to say, by the way, I'd like to have this particular issue audited, I would like to see any, any contracts that exceed 110% be audited? It doesn't seem to me as if we had another committee that really truly exerts a certain amount of control and oversight for a city that has $1.2 billion in annual expenditures. It's insane. So I decided to take a look at all of the audits that have occurred during the past 10, 15 years, and you got just about more than 1,000 housing units that were created. None of these projects has ever been audited. How is that possible? How is it possible that contracts that sit in 5 million are not selected automatically for an audit? In other words, we have an audit committee that does not serve, in my opinion, the function of an audit, to review, to initiate, to challenge, to, to do the type of investigations, to create the level of control that is necessary. And so I submitted to you two documents. This one is sort of like the body of what I would suggest for, for an amendment to the charter, and the one, the white paper is substantiations of problems that have occurred in Glendale that you can actually look up and verify. We have a substantial weakness with the Audit Committee. I don't believe that this city is performing in the way that it should. We shouldn't have the level of annual, year after year shortages on funds, we are not conducting the type of overview of a lot of the contracts that basically are exceeding. Just last week at City Council, I saw in one of the items, basically is automatically approving an, an item for a contract that exceeded over 50% of its original bid. How is that possible? Why doesn't that go to the Audit Committee? In other words, we have an Audit Committee that does not do the function of a true audit and a true oversight, and it's incredibly important for a city of this size, and it's my suggestion for that particular amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one more comment, and then one caller. Alan Dish.
Mr. Chair and Committee Members, good evening. My name is Alan Dish. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to make some brief comments about two things. First is the meeting that didn't happen last month, but should have happened maybe, but the reasoning was that it coincided with July 4th, and I just like the coincidence of how there was planned to be a Charter Committee meeting on the day when the country also, 249 years ago, or what, drafted its own, well, it was independence, not yet constitution, but it's good to keep that in mind, how more and more, Los Angeles especially, functions as a city-state, kind of with, it's making its own certain rules here and there, and Glendale has an important role to play. So just, it's a very vague, kind of naive point I'm making, but it's nice what you're doing philosophically, and it's important. Second point is that, related to a neighboring city, South Pasadena, I recently attended one of their meetings for sustainability, where they, although they are very green-aware in the sense of even their city logo is a tree, like, but they are trying to expedite, basically, the process of tree removal. The idea is there's too much democratic involvement, and like, it becomes stalled. Why am I mentioning this? Because two months ago, I wanted to bring up how Glendale City should also revisit its chartorial tree amendment section, or tree regulations, in the sense of expanding tree protections, basically. Why did I mention this? If I may refresh your memory very briefly, is that the Glendale Garden homes, which exist, which still exists, it's on North Central across the Ralphs, they underwent, basically, a process of tree removal, 30 or 40, quite large trees. It happened even in the face of certain opposition from the community and so on. So how could it have been prevented? I think as if the city charter had in it some larger protections in place for not just native trees, but also, I don't know, historic, large trees. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I will go to Sustainability Commission and then return, hopefully, to speak on the more meaty topics. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council, Committee Members, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one caller.
All right.
Susan, you're on the air with the Charter Committee, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, this is Susan Wolfson. I want to thank you all for the important work that you're doing, and there's a couple of items that are not agendized tonight that I wanted to quickly get my opinion out there. First, I think it would be a good idea for us to change our charter to have the city attorney be elected. It's become kind of an issue, as has been mentioned by a couple of speakers tonight, and not that there's anything wrong with our current city attorney, but just I think there might be more confidence in an elected city attorney, because that person would be answering to the electorate. Second recommendation that I have has to do with the city treasurer position. The city treasurer, of course, as you know, is elected, but I believe that we should have very clear, objective requirements for that, qualification requirements for that person to be sworn in. For example, perhaps, an active CPA license. They should be vetted by city management, like, say, the city manager, and perhaps the director of finance could also be a person who would vet the, vet the treasurer. And finally, I think that a council approval might be a good idea, you know, just to make sure, because our finances are, as we know, stretched, have been raised quite a bit, and so I think it's vitally important that we protect our assets. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there are no more speakers.
Okay. This is the meeting minutes from June 5. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Also moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Meeks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Miller, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No extensions? Okay. So now we get to the two more substantive items. As I said before, I'd like to take item four before item three, give Ani a little chance to come in, since that's the item we've brought back to get the full committee's participation. So moving to item four, review of proposed charter language regarding council member compensation, do we have a staff report?
We do, Mr. Chair. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation, though, and I'll, I'll keep my comments brief to leave the committee more time to discuss amongst yourselves. In your materials tonight are a cover memo attaching draft language for a proposed council member compensation commission. At your meeting of June 5, the committee directed staff to return with draft language that was based upon the tenets of the Committee on Council Member Compensation that's codified in the Pasadena City Charter. The basic elements that the committee wanted to see were a provision requiring the city council to establish an appointed advisory body, that the advisory body consider the full scope of council member compensation, not just salary, that upon a recommendation by the advisory body to change council member compensation, that the council be required to adopt an ordinance by supermajority vote, and that any such ordinance be subject to referendum. Committee also requested that the draft language incorporate a requirement that compensation be reconsidered at least once every five years, and that options be made available for a process alternative to appointment by the city council. The language before you satisfies all points of your direction with two caveats. The first is that the proposed language calls for compensation review not less than once every four years, rather than not less than once every five years, and the reason is that in the city of Glendale, all permanent boards and commissions have members that serve four-year terms. The Pasadena Committee is a temporary committee, so every time the council wants to take up the issue of compensation, it has to reconstitute that committee. We propose language of four years to align with the term of appointed members of boards and commissions in the city. The other caveat is that our proposed language is silent as to, or our draft language, rather, is silent as to the appointment process. The city charter currently requires that when the council adopt an ordinance establishing a board or commission, it provide in that ordinance the process by which members are appointed. Currently, all members of, excuse me, permanent boards and commissions in the municipal code are appointed by the council. A couple of specific terms of the draft language that I want to call to your attention. The first is that in addition to providing for compensation review at least once every four years, the draft language provides that compensation shall not be considered more than once every two years. And the reason for that is to parallel Pasadena's charter language. Pasadena's charter language prohibits the council in that city from adopting more than one ordinance in any two-year term, so this is a reframing of the same restriction. It was in one of the slides that we brought to you at the June meeting, and since our draft language is based upon that content, we incorporated here as well, certainly up for your consideration, but wanted to call your attention to it, since it's a reframing of a provision you've seen before. The other two provisions that I want to be sure to call to your attention are that just like the Pasadena language, the draft language before you provides that although this is, this would be an advisory commission, the council, excuse me, I apologize. The council would be prohibited from increasing compensation beyond that which is recommended by the commission, or decreasing it beyond that which is recommended by the commission. That is also a feature of the Pasadena charter provision. The Pasadena language expressly states that, that the council compensation could be increased beyond the, their committee's recommendation, but only by popular vote. Our language doesn't include that provision, but it certainly isn't prohibitive. The city of Glendale could do the same. And finally, it limits compensation increases to no more than 5% for each calendar year following the most recent change in compensation. Again, not a, not a creation of our draft, that's also found in the charter of the city of Pasadena. So although the language may look different in parts, the substance of the draft before you is derived directly from the Pasadena City Charter per your direction. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have, and that's my report.
Are there questions for staff? Alan.
I have a question. Is the 5% per annum limitation on increases, is that cumulative? For example, if this committee... For example, if this committee only met at the end of a four-year period, would they be able to increase the compensation by 20% or just by 5 for that year?
I think the former. But it would certainly be, this committee could structure the language however you so chose, but as it's drafted, I think the former is a viable option for that council.
I just thought it might be more clear to make it clear that it was cumulative.
And that's certainly something that we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm thinking over the language here. It was a good question from Alan. Are there any other questions? Rachel.
So, a couple things. I got the email, I reviewed it before I came to the meeting, but I think I will see a print copy, I didn't have it now, so I was going to print, like, whatever you sent to us. Yeah, I'm looking at my phone, but like, yeah.
Paul can share.
I'm looking at my phone, but I have one. In the future, are we supposed to print out things when you email it to us?
I do, but that's a professional habit.
Apologize, I think the packet was so large this time, because we had included all the other materials from the first item or item three. I think we just didn't include that in this particular set of documents we provided.
Then, the other one is that, minor thing, the proposed language, there's a majority vote for, by five out of five. We're here to increase the committee that the council members, so in the event that we increase, it's not going to be correct, right?
Are you talking about the four-fifths majority vote? It's four-fifths of however many.
Yeah.
Does that mean like four out of five?
It'd be four out of five, or what's four-fifths?
It's five, five, five-six, actually.
So maybe I could, I could address that. So in Pasadena, the charter provision requires a two-thirds majority. Pasadena has an eight-member council. It's a seven council members and the directly elected mayor. On our council, three-fifths would be a simple majority, four-fifths would be a supermajority as it is currently constituted. But if this committee does make a recommendation to increase the size of the council, one of the things we would bring back to you is what the ripple effect would look like where supermajority votes are required in the charter. So there are other provisions in the charter that require a four-fifths vote. And we would bring back to you all the provisions that might be implicated by your decision to increase the size of the council, as that would very likely warrant your attention elsewhere as to a proportional increase.
So four-fifths of seven is six, because whole numbers.
Correct, but it needn't be.
Yeah. And then, but that leads me to my next question, is this intended to be four-fifths vote or four-fifths of, four-fifths voting or four-fifths of all members of the council? Those are two different things, because you could have quorum of the council voting on something, and you have six members. I don't know what the structural practice is here, but those are two different things.
Right. And I think the California rule has treated it as if you say it's four-fifths vote of a body, then it's that body regardless of how many members are there at the meeting.
So four-fifths majority means four-fifths majority of the quorum.
Four, no, no.
As it's written here.
I think it means a four-fifths majority of the council.
The entire body, yeah. So currently, it would be four members of the council. So we always interpret it where our charter requires four votes for certain zoning actions, four-fifths vote. We treat it as requiring four council votes regardless of how many, what the quorum is for that particular meeting.
Well, four-fifths of four is four.
Yeah. Yeah. It's easier, correct. But like Mr. Israel said, well, you know, depending on what direction we get on expanded council, we'd make sure to go through all the charter, because there are a lot of charter provisions we'd have to amend if that were the case.
Other questions, Rachel?
So, and then regarding the four-year, like, the cycle, I just want to know how it's going to work in, like, practice. So let's say, year one, we let new council member, and then there's a committee about the compensation. Are they going to discuss compensation for the current member or the next, like, four year after? How that's going to work if we sync the compensation council and the tenure of the council members? How those do work?
So that's a very good question. So the draft language presumes that the provision goes on the ballot in 2026. And if it's approved, the first opportunity that the council will have to appoint the commission is in 2027. And the draft language calls for that to happen essentially in the first half of 2027. At that point, you have a four-year commission. And it does not have to act within the first two years, but it could. It has to act at least once every four years. And once it's convened and it makes a recommendation, or once it's convened, it has 180 days, it has six months to make a recommendation to the council. The charter provision before you doesn't call for the council to take action on it within a certain period of time. It doesn't, it doesn't establish a shot clock, if you will, for the council action. So that's something that we could more particularly specify, if that's something that the committee wants to see, or it can be left to the discretion of the council as to when they take it up and when are they required to act upon it.
Right now, it has to be prospective, the effect of the, not would.
No, that's correct. That's correct. But the, what I'm trying to say is that the, the structure of the committee is that they have a clock in which to make, they have time in which they have to make a recommendation, but there's no requirement that the council take it up immediately thereafter, within six months thereafter. But yes, it has, it has prospective effect. It has prospective effect once they take it up, but they're not required to take it up within any particular period of time. I hope I'm answering your question.
I'm still a little confused. So let's say the committee made some sort of recommendation for, to increase the compensation by like 3%. It's up to the council to decide whether they're going to take up that recommendation and then implement it, or just like, okay, you gave me a, like, recommendation, but I'm not going to do anything until next council members, like, how does that work? That's my question.
As it's structured, as I believe is the case in Pasadena, they don't have to, they don't have to act on it. They do not have to act on it at all. Or they can, they can defer it to a future, a future time to, a future opportunity for consideration.
And if they, if the council decides to accept the, like, 3% like increased recommendation, it's going to affect their, their salaries starting, what, next year, next month?
Starting the next term.
What do you mean next, when is the next term?
So it would be after the next council member's election, correct?
Next election.
So it's, the way it works is, and just like state law, usually it would, it would not be effective until at least one council member starts a new term. So if we, for example, tomorrow, our city council adjusted council salaries, that wouldn't take effect until after the June 2026 election, when at least one council member will be starting a new term.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And then my last one is that I have some concerns about who's going to appoint the compensation member. According to the memo, in Pasadena, the council member's going to appoint the compensation council members, right? Isn't that?
In Pasadena, each member of the council appoints one member of the commission, I believe, subject to confirmation of the entire council. Of course, we have a panel system for appointments of our permanent boards and commissions in Glendale. Because this language does not prescribe an alternative process, although the council could certainly deviate from the current process, that would likely be what it looks like. However, that's established by ordinance, so that is subject to change, meaning that in Pasadena, it's one for one. Each council member picks one person, the council votes to approve them as a whole. In Glendale, they're appointed by panels, by, under ordinance, under current ordinance. That ordinance could be changed, the council could retain it, the council could change it, and the appointment process would be at the council's discretion unless charter language says otherwise.
And just to clarify, the, our panels nominate candidate for commission and then approve by the full council.
I'm very concerned by the fact that the council member can have some influence on who gets seated on the committee, who can decide their compensation. I think the compensation committee, if we decide to make up one, should be completely independent from the city council members. So that's, I think that's a big concern.
I want to save my, want to pin that issue, though. I have a question, but is there a question over here first?
Yeah. What is, or what are the council members' retirement benefits?
Do you want to, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tattalian.
Specific retirement benefits? It would be that they, as an officer of the city, no, not a goldblatch, not, not sure. They, as an officer of the city, would vest in PERS after five years of employment and could potentially draw some portion of, some amount of a pension as a portion of what their total compensation was.
It's based on their salary at the time of their retirement, and then their, how many years of service.
Does the city consider council members' full-time positions?
No.
No.
Was I, no?
No.
So a lot of my work, if I was not in a full-time position, did not have any retirement benefits.
Our contract with PERS requires that we enroll all of our employees with, into PERS after a certain number of hours.
Okay. So that's citywide?
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't matter if they're union, non-union, whatever.
Correct.
That's good. My second question was, you said if this committee is appointed, it could meet for two years before they turn in a recommendation for salary, and then you said something about 180 days, they have to come up with a report.
So that's, that's right, committee member Meeks. So for purposes of comparison, in Pasadena, the Pasadena provision states that by October in any given year in which the committee is constituted, they must provide a report to the council. So essentially, if the committee is convened at the earliest possible date, January 1st, they have 270 days from the time they're convened till the time they have to provide a report to the council. If they don't provide a report to the council, that is, that constitutes a report that they recommend no change. So basically, they have to complete their work timely, or the council presumes by law, the charter imputes on them, a recommendation for no change. The draft language in front of you simply sets that clock at 180 days instead of 270 days, again, because of the terms, the four-year terms that permanent members of Glendale boards and commissions serve. But yes, you're absolutely right that because the requirement is to review not less than once every four years, they could be, they could be convened and not meet for three years or for three and a half years, essentially, because the language says not more than once, I'm sorry, not less than once every four years and not more than once every two years. So essentially, they could make two recommendations, at most two recommendations, and at least one recommendation in any four-year period.
And those recommendations, if they actually make one, not just ignore it.
Right.
Would be cumulative, like Alan was saying. So if they meet on year three, it could be a 15% increase.
It could be, and to a committee member Durham's point, if, if it's the will of the commission to, to see this language more expressly reflect cumulative annual increases, we can make that more express in the language.
Thank you.
Denise?
Just one question I have in relation to this. Thank you for putting the language together and actually seeing how it works. Seeing it as such, I just want to confirm that another alternative for this committee is to not adopt the language, not do anything. And then to also remind our committee members that there are already measures in place for council to give themselves a raise or to look at their compensation, they just haven't. And we could possibly discuss language around that. I mean, we could go down the path where maybe they have to look at language.
And we can, when we get, we can discuss that when we get to more open deliberations. Right now, I think we're focused on clarifying our questions.
Just to answer, we brought this language back to the committee because that was the direction we gave.
We specifically asked for this.
But no, no final decision had been made.
I just, for my own purposes of knowing what's before us, because I asked to see this, but now seeing it in writing, we do have another option as a committee, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Alan.
I'd just like a clarification. So the city council may take action on the commission's recommendation and increase the compensation paid by a supermajority vote. My question is, subject to referendum as provided in this charter, but it says the council would increase their salary by adopting an ordinance. What's the required referendum on an ordinance versus a charter change?
So the reference to a referendum is not as to this language. It would be as to an ordinance by the council, either to increase or even decrease their compensation as it's structured. And again, that parallels what Pasadena City Charter has codified. Basically, what it says is that once the council does take that action, let's say to increase their salary, that that, that ordinance, that action to increase their salary, is subject to a referendum as the Glendale City Charter provides. And all the Glendale City Charter provides on referendum is that it incorporates state law. So it's, it's the generally applicable referendum process.
It's the same thing. It's.
Yeah, you get signatures, you submit them at a certain time, and then.
Thirty days.
And then the council can either repeal it or put it to the voters.
Chair. Paul.
Thanks. So this is probably a mechanics, technical question. So as I understand it, the draft language would amend the charter directing the council to, to adopt an ordinance. That ordinance then was, you know, kind of, was prescribed here generally what that ordinance should contain. Presumably, an ordinance would get passed, and subsequent to that at any point in time, that ordinance could be changed at any point by any council. Is that, is my understanding correct?
Yes, but the charter superseding an ordinance, the council would have to have an ordinance pursuant to the charter, convening a compensation commission.
Well, I guess where I'm going with that is, should the ordinance contain aspects of this contemplated provision that aren't expressly written in this charter amendment, could they, you know, go, could they expand or that ordinance?
So unless, I think that's a very good question, and I think the answer is, the other charter provision referenced in, I think it's footnotes one and two, state what, what elements of an ordinance establishing a board or commission must be present. So you could have more specificity in this provision.
Mm-hmm.
If not, the default would be back to these other charter provisions that are in footnote, just footnote one, excuse me.
So I'll save my comments, because I have some, I've thought about this, and I think, I appreciate the approach, but I think there's some significant flaws in this approach, which I could save my comments for when we talk about it broadly.
And maybe, Chair, I can, I can give maybe one more piece of context for this draft language versus the Pasadena City Charter, and that is our direction to remove extraneous content. So there is a level of specificity in the Pasadena City Charter that is provided elsewhere or that is otherwise established by law. For instance, Pasadena City Charter says that the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act shall govern the conduct of the meetings of the committee. Of course, the Brown Act governs the meetings of the committee, so we felt that was extraneous and could be removed. And I'm not suggesting that that's the level of specificity that committee member Carpettin is discussing, but to note that there is, by way of example, that the mayor's selection in Pasadena serves as the first chair of the compensation committee. We took that out because our, our ordinances regarding permanent boards and commissions say that they shall elect their own chair. You could have that level of specificity in this provision, to say who, who becomes the chair. But since so much of this is established elsewhere in the charter and in the municipal code and in state law, we felt that we would leave those particulars to this committee to discuss. And if you wanted to incorporate more detail, for instance, specifying cumulative accruals and. in salary, that is certainly your prerogative to do, but we didn't want to inject our subjective impression of what might be there presenting you with the most straightforward draft that we could.
No, I appreciate the position. The instructions were draft something akin to X, and you did that. I just think there, as you look at the mechanics of it, it's probably a downgrade from our current, how we do it.
Much in Pasadena is a little ornate.
I had a question, see if I can remember it at this point. I'm a little thrown by the concept of the four-year cycle and then the four, do they have a four-year term that the people serve on the commission, they're going to be appointed for four years, but really, they have to act within six months, they can only act twice, so they're actually, they're only meeting for a maximum of 12 months? Out of the four years?
So, yes, I think that that's right.
That's, I mapped it right.
I think that's right. The alternative, or at least one alternative, the Pasadena alternative, is to structure the committee or commission as a temporary board or commission. One of the potential drawbacks, again, for your consideration, is that that means any time the council takes up the issue of compensation, they have to reappoint committee members.
It becomes...
So, ostensibly, they're doing those appointments once every two years.
It seems to me you're going to have people who agree and then drop, and you're going I had another question about the language, because it seems to me that, and this is mechanical, Paul said, it says in the first paragraph, "The commission shall be first convened," that's the word, "in the year 2027." And then it says later, "After being convened, the commission shall submit its report to the city council with 180 days." So, that means they're appointed, they've got six months' clock ticking.
It's a great...
Because it's the same word.
Right, it's a great point. And so, I think the idea is that, once the committee initiates its, once a meeting schedule is initiated and it has its first meeting, not after they're appointed, that then they shall submit within 180 days. So, the meaning is the same in the first and second paragraphs, that not only, in the first paragraph, must it be established in 2027, but it must have its first meeting in 2027. And then after it has its first meeting, it has to submit a report to the council with 180 days.
The council would be, have to adopt an ordinance by July of 2027, so we're already at month seven, and then they have to go through the appointment process, which is going to take...
I wouldn't want to presume.
A couple of months, at minimum? And then, they are, are they convened at the time they first meet?
Again, I think we can, if the desire is for more clarification on established or appointed versus convened...
I don't want to overthink this, but like, I can already see that it's, some of it's so timeline-bound, and then there's not a lot of...
And I think, again, it can be, it can be more generalized or greater specified, but the idea is that, once they're convened, the clock starts on their report, which is, again, the Pasadena model. Pasadena gives their committee 270 days at most, until October 1 of the year in which they are convened.
Something more broadly about other commissions. If the charter says that an ordinance establishing a commission shall specify, does every single other commission have to be established by ordinance?
Yes, if it's a permanent commission, yes.
Okay. So, do we even need to have this language in here about adopting an ordinance establishing the, just, can we just say there's hereby a permanent commission, the city council compensation commission, and then allow Section 2, Article 14, to control at that point? They have, and then the council shall convene it no later than, and we give them a date, and then everything else rolls from that day. We can keep this shorter, and that way the voters don't have to wade into this and go, what does this all mean, like we're doing right now?
I guess, I think the only concern would be if someone didn't say, what says we have to do by ordinance, so we'll point out the code, but the charter says, you just create it, you just do it. So, I mean, it's, I think it's probably one extra step that probably wouldn't hurt to leave in there.
I also, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think that any of the other permanent boards or commissions are expressly...
In the charter?
Provided for in the charter.
Other than civil service.
Other than civil service.
What does it say about the civil service?
I would have to look back.
Right, it says there shall be a civil service commission comprised of five members. That's basically it.
I like that.
Yeah. You could write it that way. We could mirror, have the language mirror the civil service, at least in that.
If you use the same language, then you can rely on the same procedures, and if that works, that's my, sorry, I lawyer that. Are there any other questions? Knowing that you can ask more questions later.
I think the only thing I would add to that, Chair Flyer, is that, just in terms of hearing this committee's direction from our last meeting, that if the desire is to prompt a certain action within a specified period of time by the council, I would only say that that's the reason it's timeline-driven, is to give...
And I think the idea of having a start date for the council to take an action to actually form the committee, so they don't just sit on it, although it's in their interest to do something, is a good idea, but like, saying that they have to adopt an ordinance, it's just going to lead to all these, lead to all these questions here.
Sure.
I'm fine with saying that they have a four-year term and that they shall act, issue a report, not more than, I'm getting into deliberations, but I think we could incorporate some of it without getting into the...
I got you. Mirror civil service, I got you.
Question?
I'm following up with committee member you. In terms of appointing this board commission, can we take it out of the hands of the council and give it to someone else, whether it be the city manager, or city clerk, or whatever, to appoint these people?
Should we appoint a committee to appoint the committee? We can come up with something, that's the, in my opinion, but I'll...
We left that point silent for your consideration, and only pointed out that if the charter provision didn't specify, an ordinance adopted by the council would establish the appointment process. And ostensibly, because all other permanent boards and commissions are, have five members appointed by our five-member city council, I think that that's a logical conclusion as to how this body would be appointed as well. But it's silent for your consideration. The answer, though, is yes, you could prescribe an alternative.
Just pointing out, though, that the proposed charter language does have guardrails already in it, as far as the maximum increases that can incur. So, I mean, to the extent that there's a concern that the electives will have control of the process, the charter does put those controls in place. But again, we'll seek the direction from the committee and present that to the council.
I think we have some members of the public who wanted to comment on this. There's the number... I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chair, there is one caller and two speakers.
All right, we'll begin in the room, as always.
Beth Brooks. Oh, Herbert. Herbert.
Members of the committee, I want to make this about as short and clear as possible with an option. I'm making a suggestion for this committee to take up the idea of one single term of six years. Also, that the compensation be limited to just one-half of the median family income, with no benefits, especially no benefits with regard to CalPERS. I just checked the CalPERS website, and they said council members are excluded, it's optional. So, they're not mandated to take it. I just want to make that clarification. And why? Because they themselves are negotiating with this, with this employee unions with regard to the compensation that they're getting, including CalPERS. So, when we had, and I was a member of the review committee for the pension system, none of the recommendations that were really significant that we presented were really taken up by council, because they themselves are benefiting from it. And if you take a look at a council member with just eight years, let's say Bob Yusefian, look at transparent California, he's making about $1,000 a month, you know, for the rest of his life, ever since he left in 2009. So, at the end of the day, you know, it's $100,000 if he lives, or maybe even more. The point is that we need to disengage these benefits from the very same people who are negotiating with these employee unions. Here's a reason why six years should be, because if you have a vision of you, what you want to do, and you can execute it, six years is plenty of time, it doesn't become a career. Ari Najarian, 20 years. David Weaver, 16 years. Frank Interro, 14 years. Paula Devine, 10 years. Larry Zarian, 16 years. Rafi Manoukian, 12 years. It's becoming like a career for these individuals, right? And we do not have the fresh thinking and the commitment to public service. It's a part-time job. We have artificial intelligence now. We don't expect these guys to be experts in finance, or experts in Glendale Water and Power, we don't expect them to be experts in all of these technical fields. Therefore, it is the trust in the public service that's important for these elected officials. This is not unusual, one term, six years, and you're done, and over. And then the compensation make it relevant, so that they are aware of what the median income is for families in Glendale. Not an exception. We have this explosion in salaries that is insane. We need to come back to reality, make it simple. One six-year term, that's it, no benefits. Make it simple. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Brooks.
It's good, I'll listen to him. I, to Denise's point, and then after listening to this presentation, I think you're making it much more complicated than it has to be. I also think you've pushed it so far into the future, let's begin talking about it in '26, '27, and then you have six months to do this, and another six months to do that. I think you should institute something right away, at least for the next city council, at least before June 26. You know, I don't even know why you would put this off so long. I don't know if that, you have to do that according to the charter, but I don't know, you have to do that according to the charter?
Yeah, there's a...
Is that why it has to go so far?
There's a long process of getting this onto the ballot, getting approved.
Well, then I think you should change the charter.
We're trying to. We have to change state law to do it faster.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, if that's the issue, like, the charter makes it so that we have to put it into the future, change the charter. Totally change the charter. You have to get things like moving. I mean, people think of government as kick the can down the road, it's going to happen, we're going to talk about it, we're going to talk about it some more, and it doesn't happen. It has to happen, especially for salaries. I think that's very, very important, because it depends, because it's going to open it up, if you have a fairly decent salary, to people who will use this to help pay their mortgage and their rent. So, I think, I think that's number one, change your charter. This is ridic, this is crazy. You know, this should, this should be for the next election, right away. I also think you've made it much more complicated. I think it should be tied to, at least what Mr. Milano said, half of the family median income, absolutely no retirement benefits. I don't agree with the one term of six years, because you could wreak a lot of havoc in six years. I think you could wreak a lot of havoc in four years. I think three years is much better than four years. I think these people have to have a little fire under them, a little fear, and I think you have a little fear when you, when you want to be re-elected. So, I don't agree with the, you know, with that question. I think you can't constitutionally, I mean, you can't make somebody say you only get one term and that's it. I don't, that I absolutely don't agree with. But I think you should just tie it to either whatever the state says, or to family median income, and then you don't need this just big mess that you have, that you've made much more complicated than it really has to be. It's either take the 2,250, or whatever the number was, I don't remember exactly that the state said, 2,500, 2,250, I don't recall, or half the family median income, and then you also tie increases to whatever the increase is, the average increase that an employee gets. But unless you work, you're elected to two terms, let's say eight years, then you should be entitled to retirement benefit. I think that that's fair. You shouldn't be penalized just because you're a city council member. But I do think it shouldn't be maybe four years. I don't think that's, that's quite enough. But that's, I think, just don't make it complicated, and definitely change your charter, so you're not just kicking the can down the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have two callers.
Okay.
Susan, you're on the air with the Charter Review Committee. Thank you, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Susan Wolfson, I'm calling in again to discuss this particular agenda item with you very briefly. I am opposed to this. We already have a way for council member compensation to be determined. I think this would complicate matters excessively. It would not eliminate, as we've heard already, but gosh, it would not eliminate the suggestion that council members are somehow influencing their compensation anyway. So, why do this? It just seems excessively complicated, and I, I am opposed to it, and that's my thoughts. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Patrick, you're on the air with the Charter Review Committee, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie, Charter Committee members.
Sir, we can't hear you. If you could speak up or speak directly into your phone.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little better, thank you.
Pardon me?
It is better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the Charter Committee members for their service. This is not an easy committee to be on. I agree with Susan, who just called, that nothing should change. Council members know upfront, before they make decisions to run for office, what their compensation is to be, and we should follow the state guidelines. If the council chooses not to give themselves a raise in any given year or any given period, then that is their choice, but we should follow the state guidelines and not change a thing. Sounds very complicated, what we just saw and listened to. So, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's everyone.
All right. So, it's back to us. I'd like to hear what others have to think. I haven't heard from a few of you, so I want to hear what everyone has to think. I have not heard from everybody. I would like to note that Ani's here, and we're glad you're here, thank you for joining You've been quiet. If you want to wait, that's fine.
No, it's just because I, it's like, the questions were there. First of all, I say thank you to the city attorney's office, both of the attorneys, putting this together, because we did ask for that. But my initial reaction in reading it, listening to it, it's like, man, this has gotten really complicated. And then we're talking about what constitutes it. And here comes, I think, the difficult part. However you do this, if council appoints a compensation commission or a committee, then they have influence over that. Council appointed this group of people, so arguably, they can say they have influence over this, so if we make changes to compensation, or put something onto the charter, it's like, there's always going to be a process. And ultimately, council's going to have to, going to have to pass on that. Maybe somebody here has a different idea on how you can get a completely sort of, sort of independent, independent commission to look at it. But as I said, and I was one that kind of looked at this and thought, okay, well, maybe if there's a process and a procedure, it allows us to adapt to things going forward. But I'm now thinking of something a little bit more simpler, where maybe it is, kind of going back to think what you talked about last time, Paul, was, you know, prompting the conversation, that every so often, it needs to be reviewed, and council needs to make, make a, make a decision on where it is. I'm still open on state guidelines. Half of median income isn't that much further above, I think, state guidelines, if I'm doing the math in my, in my head. It kind of emphasizes that it's a, it's designed to be a part-time, part-time job, not a, not a full-time job, and part of the service commitment. So, as I said, I'm at the point where I don't think I like the commission part anymore, and I think I want to go back to something a lot simpler. And of course, if council decides to raise its salary, I'm assuming any, is any ordinance subject to referendum? So, if they did a council, if council came in and said, hey, we're doubling salaries, or we're working within that, and people in the public decided that that was inappropriate, they could run a referendum on that particular ordinance?
Correct, any legislative action that the council is subject to referendum.
Including recreation of the commission, apparently.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, because ultimately, that's where the buck stops. It's going to stop with, with the members of the city council. And so, as I said, I think I'm ready to go back to something a little simpler, but I'm open to listen before I settle in here.
I'm just going to work my way down the table here. Linda?
So, I stayed quiet, because I thought we were putting the cart before the horse, before we even decided that. We appreciate preparing the language, but we hadn't even decided... Overall, I know last time, I was thinking there should be a committee, but I went back and ended up studying, and just looking other cities, and also, kind of, put some thought on what committee member Karpetian mentioned. And I think he had a valid point, that if they wanted to increase their salaries, they would have. Having a committee gives the public, at least, the perspective that there is some oversight. However, maybe we can mandate it, so they have some review process as a council, on regular basis, instead of just having a separate committee, and just creating all that extra process that we have discussed today. Thank you.
Right.
I've always been in favor of paying them more, because I think it brings an element of democratizing the council. I think right now, it's only for retirees, or people that own their own business. If we want schoolteachers, if we want people like us, who can go do this pretty demanding job that we say is voluntary and part-time, and yet, you know, complain when there's not enough meetings, or complain they don't have the expertise on certain, you know, very dense subjects, I think, the way that we can start to work there slowly is by increasing the payment. So I like the simplicity of tying it to the median family income. But I think I'm closer to putting it towards the full median family income. I think it ties it simply to them being part of the community, you don't have to vote on it, it takes away the optics of them controlling their old salary. So whether it's half, or full, somewhere in the middle, that's where I'm leaning right now. Simple, clean, and we'll kind of start pushing a more realistic idea of what is required of the city council, and the types of people we want to hold that position. Thank you.
Okay. So I, I spent quite a bit of time on this. I thought this was gonna be the least important, but here's what, what I think can improve the current process. So, an affirmative amendment to the charter requiring that this be taken up by council, perhaps every, at least every four years? Because then, we don't have the excuse that it wasn't discussed. But, I just want to elaborate on a couple other points. The, the current process, besides the, you know, our, how we select our boards and commissions, is kind of difficult, and this would be uber-difficult, in my opinion. I think what we have right now is a really best of both worlds. So, we don't want the council to have influence on their salaries. And the charter, in its wisdom, says you go by what the state says. And the state has very prescriptive guidelines on how much the maximum monthly salary could be, based on the population of the city. You know, however, and this is a question, I mean, should a city get so complicated, and council really feels they should be paid more, I think there's a mechanism by which they can still have that done. Is that, I guess that's a question for Mr. Garcia. In other words, there's, if they want to go beyond the state recommendations, and they really have a good case for it, they can, if they wanted to.
They would have, the only way to do that is to have a charter amendment that give them the flexibility. Right now, the only way they can do it is to comply with the state, state mandate.
Okay. So, the, the other point that I wanted to make was, that since 2013, since we haven't had any increases, if you had, if you look at the CPI index since then, the, the increases would have gotten you to about $2,050 a month. So, if they had just gone by CPI, they would be at just under even the state max, which is $2,550. So, I think we have a good mix of, look, we're following state guidelines, we're not trying to appoint people. And then the last thing I'd say is, there's guardrails in the state guidelines that aren't in this ordinance, such as the CPI limit. So I think, where was it? G2 in the government code, was it G2? Sorry. 4B. CPI not exceed 10% each calendar year. So, you know, that's a downgrade, in my opinion. The 5% of each calendar year, from its operative date, that allows them to go back, if I understand, understand that correctly, they can go back and increase 5% every year right now, if they wanted to. So, I think we have the best of both worlds, where they have the cover of, look, we're following state guidelines, they have the ability to raise their salaries, and they just need to do it, and deliberate it openly. They, they have, you know, there's all kinds of things that are deliberated at city council, this would be an easy one to do. And, I think they don't do it, because one, it's, doesn't look good, if you're raising your salary, if you're not doing a good job. But if you're doing a good job, and you can make your case to the voters, then, no problem. People would support it. And, I, I just think the current process, with the amendment that there is an affirmative obligation to revisit this every four years, and, and deliberate either increase, decrease, or no change. I do have one question. How is it that the benefits are determined, like, to include the pension, is that, is that, you said it was a city policy for all employees? Is that what that stems from?
Every agency that has a contract with CalPERS, has a menu of options to choose from. That's one of the options that was selected at the time that the contract was entered into. It's no different than selecting the benefit formula for your particular agency to provide benefits for. Some agencies provide steeper benefits for their, their employees, others provide one of two lower benefits.
I see. So the agency, so the agency being the city, is, and it says that any employee, part-time, full-time, gets CalPERS?
Yes. You, under our contract, that's the case.
And, and that contract, is that contract amended from time to time?
I suspect you can amend the contract, as it relates to your employees, you would have to meet and confer, because that is a change to their compensation package. I don't know how it would apply to an elected group of five individuals.
Yeah, would that be something we'd have to look into?
Okay.
Because I think the, the speakers bring up some really good points, in terms of, and so this seems like it, that is a potential conflict there, I think. So that, that's, has nothing to do with this salary discussion, but it does have to do with the broader compensation discussion. And I know the, the government code specifically, specifically talks about other compensations, and that they should not be included in salary, so. That's it.
Rachel?
So, the compensation committee, how it's gonna work, based on the proposed memo, just like many other people think, I think it's way too complicated.
Rachel, I'm sorry, would you mind speaking directly into the mic? There's some people in the back of the room who say they can't hear you.
Just like other people said, I think the compensation committee, as it's drafted in the memo, is way too complicated. Just to put things in perspective, like, it says, they can only allow no more than 5% increase, right? So even if we set up this committee, going through all these hurdles, the maximum is 5%. And, the 5% is like, not a lot of money, so currently, the base salary is like $17,000 and change, 5% of that is like, less than $900. Even if we go with the median income of Glendale, I just looked it up, it's like, almost $40,000, 5% of it is like $2,000. So, to make that much change, we have to go through, like, we have to find people, like the committee, have all the city people, like, employee, make the, like, time and, you know, room to organize the meeting, do the research. I think that's a lot of ways to, just to give, increase maximum, like, $1,000 or $2,000. So I don't think the, having the committee, compensation committee is a good use of public resource, as is written currently, so I don't think it's a good idea. At the same time, I don't think the, the current system that we have is a good idea either, because, you know, since, almost for the past 10 years, no, nobody has gotten any raise, and in part because it's really hard to vouch for your own increase. And, if, a lot, I understand, a lot of people thinks that the current system that we have is fine, but like, if I, I'm, I'm trying to put my, me into the council member's position, let's say I'm a council member, I want a raise, how am I gonna, like, like, tell, convince people that I should get paid more? Like, what is the measure? Like, I attended 90% of the council meeting, therefore I should get a raise? Or, like, I, I mean, it's not a legislature, it's not, you cannot judge council member by number of, like, you know, bill that they drafted, right? So how are we gonna measure that they did a good job, or, or the bad job? Like, the measure of somebody being a good job or bad job, that's an election. If you get reelected, people think that you did a good job. So, I don't know how, like, I'm, I'm not, I'm just asking to people who think the current system is okay, how can they, like, promote that I should get more, more salary? What's the good way to convince people that I should get more money? That, that's, I, I don't have a question, I, I have a question about that, so, that's my current thought.
Ani?
I'm in agreement with Brian and Rachel. Doing a good job in government is very subjective, and typically, government employees never do a good job, so it's difficult for, for them to actually even have people say that they're doing a good job, unless they get reelected. And you should make this position attractive enough for people in the working class to want to run. Otherwise, you're gonna get the same people, the same ideas, the same thoughts. That's it.
I actually have a question before my comments. If we change the number of the council members, when they choose or elect, not elect, assign people for other commissions, those should change too, right? Because each one elects one person, is that correct? So automatically, they will increase or decrease?
It wouldn't be automatic, but it would, the council would have to take action to amend the size of those commissions, if they wanted to.
Okay. Yeah, I used the wrong word, so it's not automatic, but they, it would, okay. I think I had commented last time, and I agree with Paul too, that a lot of times, what's there can be done in a different way to produce different results, than making things complicated. Or change so much that maybe the same resources, and same, whatever is already there, can be modified or worked around differently to have better results. So, I, a lot of times, keeping it simple, but ma, making people accountable for their actions and what they do is probably the best. And we'll talk about that. In terms of the numbers, I, I'm not sure about changing the numbers yet, but maybe adding two more people, but that's just the number in my mind. The salary issue, I think in modern lives, when people do feel, whether it's government work, or private work, if they feel that they do enough, and they do good job, I don't think that's usually a problem to ask for some kind of a raise. Again, whether it's the public work, or private people, when they think they deserve. And, of, as we have talked about this, these people do talk about a lot of big issues, and challenging issues, and things that they're not scared of talking about. So I think asking for a salary increase should not be a problem for people who try to make a lot of laws and regulations, and very important issues. So, I don't think that that's the issue. Maybe they have not done this because they thought they shouldn't talk about it, but I don't think that's because they're afraid of talking about it. So we should not really, probably, use another resource, or five additional people to decide. Maybe we will decide a cap, that should be revisited every three years, and they should maybe have the reasoning, why should they get the increase or not? But I don't think these people have a problem talking about issues like this, because everything they talk about is very challenging, so. And I think, if you're in that position, you should not be afraid of talking about why you deserve an increase. So that's, that was one of my, so I'm not sure about having a separate committee who should decide this. It should probably just be there, and they have to raise the issue every two, three years, should not be, not touched for, is it 20 years? 15 years? 12 years? And then, they, they should touch upon this, and they should argue about why they deserve this, and probably somewhat fair salary, because, yes, these are volunteer works, but I think people should also realize that people spend so much more than, I don't know, 40 or 60 hours a week, doing this. And it will encourage people to actually come and try to do, and not think that, oh, this is a volunteer work, they don't get paid, and it will increase other people to come and try to do public work, knowing that they will get some reasonable and fair compensation for it.
In terms of the comments that I have, I, in any salary discussion, it seems that there's a merit discussion that's been raised by some of my colleagues here, and then there's a cost of living, which has been raised by others. The merit portion of the council member's salary is handled through the election, they're either reelected or not, and that's by citywide, and not just this charter. The cost of living, though, is there, and for me, it is in the wording that is currently in place. And, I do, my second and brief comment is that I really do want to thank staff for going down this path with us, because I do think this committee's done their due diligence. I do think we went out to the best resources that we thought were available. We examined other cities, you've put it into language, and now seeing this language, this language complicates what we already have in place. So, to just echo what Mr. Karpetian said, I think you can really bring it back to, I do think that there are some specifics you can put in, in terms of time, that councils require to review their salary and make a decision. Thank you.
I'm very much in agreement with committee member Karpetian's comments, so I'm not going to reiterate them at length. I was interested in seeing the draft of the compensation committee, so I thank the staff for drafting it, because it's not easy. But, having read it and thought about it, it just seems like we might be opening more of a can of worms than actually solving the issue. Particularly since the compensation committee would go through all these deliberations, only to make a recommendation that's got to be approved by a supermajority of council. And given the fact that previous councils have not even wanted to address compensation increases, it's likely that it probably won't get a supermajority, and then it would all be for naught. So I like the idea of the charter requiring the council to address its compensation at some regular interval, so that at least there's a discussion, and council then makes the decision. But, I'm not really in favor of a compensation committee. Thank you.
So originally, I was in favor of a compensation committee, I thought it would be a good idea. However, thank you to the staff, actually, after seeing what, what you provided, and hearing all my colleagues' comments. I do agree with committee member Durham and several others, that I think that, at this point, we would only complicate it with another committee. So we shall stay on the, whatever the existing recommendation is. However, I would definitely, would like to see that, to have a set time for the council members to decide on the compensation. It is something that is already in there, but I think what we haven't done is require that, that they be reviewed in regular intervals. So, it will take that element of subjectivity, I think, away. So, I think that's very important for us to do. And as far as the salary, we already have the guidelines of the state. So I think that it would be well deserved, that we should only look at those that are available right now. And, that would be the half of the median income, I think. And, yeah, I think that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I, I will say with everyone else that we appreciate going through this and doing all of this, it really opened a lot of eyes and made us think about things, I believe that we should not do the commission committee, and I think that the city council should be required to review compensation on an election cycle, like the second meeting after every election, and, and that, they have to put it on the agenda to discuss it at that time, that sort of thing, because on each election, you may get a new council member, so I think that that would be a good way to, I don't want to say force, but make the council actually responsible for looking at things, and not just bringing it up every now and then, I think that's all I have to say about it.
You were talking.
I did, so I might have something to say, but you haven't.
No, no, you go ahead.
All right, I think it's kind of a question for one of the city attorneys, it's like, because as I'm kind of listening around the room, it's kind of like, all right, if we
leave things the same, we require that it be brought up on a period, a particular period, I think what the max is twenty-five, twenty-five fifty a month, under state law, that comes out to about thirty thousand bucks a year, I think if you use half of area median income, it's a little bit more, not significantly more, but it's a little bit more, and so is it possible to basically defer to state guidelines, but in our charter allow that the cap would be one-half of area median income, but all the rest of the sort of safeguards and guardrails would stay?
It could probably be written that way.
That's, I'll put that out for a thought, that was, that was the thought as it was going around.
I began this item the last time saying, I didn't really know where I thought, and I didn't, what I thought, or I didn't have any very strong opinions, and I developed strong opinions, and now I'm kind of back to where I was at the beginning. I do think having a committee though, is still a good idea, I agree that the implementation could be complicated, I kind of recoil at the idea though, of just saying, it's complex, we shouldn't do it, because I think that's not always true, and we shouldn't be scared of doing things that are complex or hard, and it's always easier and less complex to do nothing in the moment, I do think that there is a problem, a political problem for people sitting on the council, trying to make the argument that they deserve to be reelected and to be paid more, when the very fact that somebody votes to increase the salary will be seen by some, or taken by some, to just demonstrate that they're bad at their job, there's just a, there's just a presumption against people working in government, working in and for government, and I've seen it up front, up close, and it's, it can be frustrating, that said, I, you know, I'm hearing what people, the, from around the room, that there's a sense that we need to prompt the council to take regular action on this, even if they're not getting the, and maybe if the charter tells them they have to go do that, they, it gives them a little bit of a release valve on the political pressure, so the question then becomes, when should that timing be, Mr. Meeks, you suggested six months after the election?
The, I suggested a second council meeting after an election, the first council meeting, any new person would be coming in.
Yeah, I guess my worry there is that you have somebody who's brand new to the council, and they're coming on, and they haven't even really figured out where the bathrooms are yet, and.
Oh, yes, they have.
What would be the off-year equivalent for city council elections?
You mean?
You have, you've got.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight, so, so that would be, you could certainly do, and I, you know, I didn't want to weigh in this, because this is your debate to have, but I, I do see.
This is a calendar issue.
I do see, yeah, I do see Chair Flower's point about asking a brand-new council member to vote on his or her salary increase at their second meeting, so maybe have some buffer, let that person get, get their sea legs before you ask them to make that decision.
What's the halfway point, but I, I don't want it to be too close to the next election.
Right, so we have elections in even number of years now, and just so you know, when they're in presidential years, those elections are in March, and when they're non-presidential election years, they're in June, so next year's election is in June, so.
It'd be nice if it was like, a year before that.
Right, yeah, in terms of, there's, there's two issues with the date that we're talking about, one is the frequency, and then is, you know, when is the first one, and then by virtue of determining the frequency, the next one, so in terms of frequency, I think every, at a minimum, every four years would be appropriate, and I think the first one would be that first year after the, so, I guess that would be at, well, twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah, so.
See, the problem with doing it every four years, is there can be some people who are on council that are, are gonna have more time before they face the voters.
I don't.
That's why, if you did it every two years, then.
I'm okay with that too.
They're all, they're all facing the equivalent.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Does that make sense?
I'm okay with that too, and.
They don't have to do it, but it just means there are some seats that permanently will never have to face the voters within, you know.
I'm okay with it happening every, every two years, and the other thing I'd add is, which I neglected to point out earlier, the, not only does this relieve the pressure valve, like you mentioned, Chair, because the charter says we have to do it, we're gonna do it, the, the second thing, going by the government code, there are guidelines, so they can point to, look, this is what the state says that a city of our size should be, and the city is shrinking, so we have fewer people living here today than we did in, in two thousand, and, you know, in twenty-five years, the city, the city has shrunk, so, so, you know, I, I think following the guidelines gives them a lot of cover, which is, you know, a term people are using, and it gives them a, a, a good playbook to go by, so every two years is fine with me.
So, we are, so I think we are discussing three things, do we want the increase to go, the amount to go to two thousand two hundred fifty dollars, did we approve that? I don't remember approving that.
No, we're not, we're not discussing the amount, we're just discussing the process, but which it happens.
Okay, all right, so we are not discussing the minimum.
The, the council has to discuss the amount, the problem is they haven't discussed it, and we're telling them, you need to discuss it.
Okay, I understand, okay, so.
They told us to discuss it, and we're saying, no, you discuss it.
Well, yeah, yeah. You discuss it, you're, you're, you're closer to the game, number one, number two, you have the obligation to discuss it, I, I mean, I know.
But they, they also have an obligation to not duck the issue, yeah.
I, yeah, so, so let's give them the gentle nudge that they need, that every two years, you shall discuss it, you shall, you know, include findings demonstrating whether you should get an increase, or a decrease, or no change, what's the harm in that, and, and I think it's very simple, and we have bigger things to talk about.
Did you say they have to make findings, whether or not?
Well, I mean, that's what the government code says.
Is that it?
Yeah, the government code in, in section G two, you know, they have to find, you know, demonstrating the need for the increased compensation.
It's a legislative finding, but they, they certainly make that.
If they choose to adopt an ordinance, right, so it, what, this is way not complicated, so I would, I would like us to move on to the more complicated things.
So, are we not, I, we don't have language in front of us, is the problem, on this alternative, and I.
No, but, I mean, Mr. Chair, I think you can give us, and make a motion, the, you can make a motion to give us direction, and we'll bring that back, but at least we'll have some firm, and I, you know, what's, one option might be that the council consider no later than a year after each municipal election, this process, following the, following the guidelines of state law, and then the other thing, I didn't hear whether there was any consensus on that, it'd be capped at fifty percent of AMI, I know there was some discussion, so we would need direction on that. Let me reform, I, I'll make a motion, so the motion is that the charter be amended, requiring the city council to take on a discussion and a decision, deliberation of council salary, once every two years, and what was the other caveat, about one year after the next election?
So that that report be here no later than one year after the election, we'll have to make sure it's consistent, yeah, no later than the first anniversary after each election.
Yep, that's my motion.
Second.
I'll second.
And just technically, to direct staff to bring back language that effectuates that.
If I had my laptop, I'd draft it right now.
There you go.
I have a question, the, what, can we, can we change the timeline that it takes effect, or it has to be the next election, based on the current charter, it has to be the next election, right, so do we have the option to change it as well?
To what?
I think we can change it per our charter, state law requires it to be.
Next election, right.
The next election, which is what we followed.
So the reason I'm mentioning this is because some of the council members are gonna leave the council the next election, so it doesn't, if they're voting on increase, it doesn't affect them, so it's an easier voting process for people, probably, that's just, yeah, what I was thinking, but, thank you.
Does the motion have to include specific dates, a specific start date, this first, the language you bring back?
We would bring back the language, and we would probably put some dates in there.
July twenty twenty-seven or something, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and so, if I could ask, and my rights on understanding the motion to direct staff, or language, or a charter amendment that would require the city council to.
Oh, your microphone, sorry.
Yes, because mechanically.
Yes.
We don't have a charter amendment.
Right.
In front of us.
This is, this is a motion to give direction to staff, so.
Yeah, we need to have, in order to decide something today, we need a charter amendment draft language in front of us.
Yes.
And we don't have that, so.
Absolutely, I just wanted everybody in the room to be clear on that, so if you vote in favor of this, you're not voting in favor of recommending this charter amendment, you're voting simply to, to have the language brought back before us, we don't want to keep making them run around. Ani.
Would this also include us going at least with the state guidelines, to start the salary at this position?
As proposed with this motion, there's no other changes, it's simply requiring the council to affirmatively take up this issue, one year after each municipal election.
It, or, we currently include state guidelines, so. But do I, do I understand the question to be whether it sets, whether the charter language would set the salary at the max, is that your question, that's what I understood your question to be.
Okay, as proposed, it doesn't, would you like to offer an amendment to the motion?
I would, I think it's important to put that information in.
But it already is.
All right, is there a second for the motion to amend?
I second that.
Okay, so we have to take up the motion to amend the motion first, right?
Correct.
Chair Flower?
Okay, so the motion to amend, Ani, is?
Is to include language on the minimum salary, is it state or our decision?
If I may, there's no minimum salary, there's.
Or maximum, sorry, yeah, if it's the state maximum or something, we decide.
Yeah, I think what I heard, and just so we're clear, what I heard from Mr. Karpetian is that would follow, it would not allow the council to increase salaries beyond what is permitted by state law.
That's correct.
It's just the timing. That's correct, the current, the current charter language, which points to the government code, already has a maximum of the state guidelines, based on the population of the city, so the, they can't go past the state guideline maximum as is, all we're suggesting is that they have to discuss, deliberate, and come to a conclusion every two years.
So, again, the motion to amend, Ani, if I understand it correctly, would be to include in this proposed language that we would vote on presumably at our next meeting, that the, the minimum salary be raised to the maximum?
I, yeah, I would agree on that.
Chair Flower, if, if I may though, we had a motion, and we had a second, and we didn't vote on that.
Right, we.
Wouldn't we have to vote on that before we consider?
We have to vote on the motion, the motion to amend the motion first, you take them in reverse order.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm, if, we have a motion to amend.
Sorry? Quick question.
On the motion to amend, then, I'm sorry, but I would like to get, dismiss the motion to amend before this gets any more complicated on.
It, it applies to both, though, are we, we're talking about a simple majority vote of council, not a supermajority, is that correct?
That's what, under state law, yes, yeah, and, all right, this is the, Ani's motion to amend the main motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, can I get a show of hands, all right, all against?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion to amend fails, we'll take up the main motion at this point, all in favor? You want to figure out, on, on the last one?
No, it's okay, I guess, I would just ask for, maybe someone can ask for a roll call, if this one is divided, just so we have a good record.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll do a roll call on this one, this is the main motion, Paul's motion, to direct staff to bring back language for a charter amendment that would require the city council to address the issue one year after each municipal election, be good?
Once every two years, and the first one being?
Well, it's, it's one year following each municipal election, which creates it every two years.
You're better at mathing than I am.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Committee member Durham.
Yes.
Flower.
Yes.
Caribbean.
I suppose.
Harotunian.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Manasarian.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes.
Megridician.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Povolitis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, before we go to the easier to, I'm sorry, the next topic, I'd like to just call a ten-minute recess, just. And waiting for the TV.
Yeah, we're good.
And. Okay, we're live. Thanks, everybody. We are now going backwards to number three. This is a continued discussion of the directly elected mayor and council district's issue. Staff has prepared two draft motions for our consideration. This is a discussion that we had previously. We took a vote. If my recollection is correct, we deadlocked at five to five with two members absent. And so public understands, I asked that we bring the issue back at a time when we had everybody here, so that everybody could weigh in, given the centrality of this issue to the reason that we're even here. So first of all, I want to thank staff for bringing it back and to thank all the members of the committee for making an effort to be here, so we can all weigh in on this issue together, even if, you know, we could deadlock again. So with that, I don't, there's no staff report, but we do have the motions. Could perhaps the city attorneys walk us through those motions?
Absolutely. I will, maybe I will just, there's two motions. One is related to a transition, placing on the ballot, a transition to at-large, from an at-large to district system. And then the other motion is to place on the ballot a change in the charter to have a office of mayor or directly elected mayor. And the only comment that we will make in respect to both of these motions is if the committee votes not to recommend either one of those ballot measures, in other words, to not recommend a change to directly elected mayor or a change to council districts, the staff asks the committee to nevertheless consider whether or not, if the council decides to put those on the ballot, notwithstanding the committee's recommendation, what should the directly elected mayor position look like and what should the council makeup be made of? And so those are the alternate language in both of these motions. So number two has, what would, you know, if you transit, even though maybe the committee doesn't agree to do it, if you were to have a recommendation on what it should look like, you know, staff would ask that the committee consider a recommendation there, just so that we can pass that information along to the council. Same with respect to the directly elected mayor. The motion has some duties of the directly elected mayor, so even if the committee's not inclined to make a recommendation on the change, we ask you to consider making, you know, alternate recommendation on what the duty should be if the council decides to move forward. So that.
So. So looking at the mayor, mayoral motion. The first, number one, is whether or not the issue should be placed on the ballot.
Correct.
And number two is regardless of whether or not we say it should or shouldn't be on the charter, or should or shouldn't be on the ballot. If they do it, the mayor shall have equal voice and vote on all matters, no veto power. And then three, further duties if it's placed on the charter, or the charter amendment's placed on the ballot. And then number four, if the amendment is placed on the ballot establishing an office of mayor, it should also include that the mayor shall serve for a term of blank years. So one of the questions being asked is if there's a mayor question, what should the term of the mayor be? And how many terms should they be capped at, if any? Similarly, with the motion on the districts, number one is the ultimate question of whether or not we believe it should be placed on the ballot. The second question is regardless of what our recommendation is, if it is placed on the ballot, how many districts should there be? And kind of implied in there, and I'm still kind of puzzling out how we might deal with this, is whether or not, how do we factor in if there's a separately elected mayor? Look at the term question, the term limit question, and then we can look at the ultimate question. Because I do think we have an obligation, regardless of how we come out on the other motion, with regards to question one, I agree with the staff that we have an obligation to make our thoughts known if the issue goes forward, regardless of if we say no. Are there any thoughts to the contrary on that one?
Just so I understand, just so I understand what you're suggesting, the should, we're going to discuss, should the council decide to have a directly elected mayor, what that person's duties would look like?
Yes.
And again, it would be two questions. Should the charter be amended to have a directly elected mayor? And regardless of the committee's recommendation on that, if the council decides to put it forward, what would be, what would the mayor position look like?
To me, the thinking is if we, if our recommendation is don't do it, and they go ahead and do it, we still would have opinions on what those mayor's duties should be. And we'd like to voice that.
Well, I think what we're, it's a serial, you're taking, you're applying a serial way of looking at it to something that isn't necessarily decided in a serial manner, right? The decision to have a directly elected mayor, are we saying that we are considering having no change to the current process of elections and, except for let's have a directly elected mayor instead of one that's appointed? Is that on the table for, is that what we're discussing as one of the options?
You mean independent of the district question?
I'm just talking in the context of a directly elected mayor.
Yes.
So that is something we're discussing.
That is something we have discussed.
Let me, maybe I'm not being clear. The question before us is, should we have a directly elected mayor regardless of districts or not? Is that?
That is, yes. And if you don't think that it should be completely segregated from the district question, which the last time we voted on it, we took it all up together, because that was just the way that the question evolved. the way that the question evolved. Tonight, we have two separate motions. Could they be combined? Yes.
So...
In which case, you know, it, you know, my own personal thinking is, it, some ways, it does make sense to start with the district question, because you get down to, if you're going to go to districts, how many are there? And how many are there? Well, that depends on whether or not you're going to have a separately elected mayor, to me.
Yeah, and I think you made the analogy many, many months ago, that you pull one string, it affects another. So, I don't see how you can take them in a serial fashion. They have to be combined, number one. Number two, I think my opinion on this can change drastically if we have districts or we don't. So, I think it's completely germane.
Let me poke on this, then. Would it change your opinion about how many years a mayor shall serve in a single term, on whether or not we have districts? Let's just assume there's going to be districts, right? And we're just, and there's going to be a separately elected mayor. Can you isolate the question of how many, how long that mayor's term should be?
No.
You can't?
No, I can't. Because I think it's, it's germane to everything else.
So, whether or not there's districts would, or the number of just, you can't decide between, say, two years and four years? Because I think those are the two...
Yeah, because we're talking about a overarching system. It's not just one thing and one thing. It's a system that works together. That's how I see it.
Are there any other thoughts on this? Otherwise, we'll just open the floor, and we'll just have it out again.
If someone doesn't think it's a system, then please, I just...
I tend to agree that they're very interrelated, right?
I'm not saying they're interrelated, but like, I'm just pointing out this, the term limit issue for the mayor, and how long the mayor serves. And is that something that could be separated?
I totally agree. You can isolate them and think about them. And I think if we start voting on them, as it fell...
I'm trying to get the ball rolling on just making some decisions.
As it fell last time, I know we're preparing for every possible situation, but I think it's, they might fall in sequence.
Are you suggesting we just go directly to a vote, to see where we are? Is that what you're thinking?
I thought that was the plan.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to eat the elephant one bite at a time.
Do you need a motion for that to happen, or?
If, we can take it as a straw poll at this point?
Whatever you, whatever you prefer, Chair.
I mean, if someone wants to make a motion, of course, consider it.
It doesn't matter to me. How do we want to proceed? I can make a motion, or we can have the chair take a straw vote. What do you want to do?
Just before, I mean, do you have two speaker cards?
Oh, that's a good point. We should, yeah, we need to get some public comment. Okay.
Does...
I'm sure, before we get to the public comment, I would feel better if we had a better sense of where our conversation is going to go, so that the public could adequately weigh in.
Understood.
But, we may not get there, so...
Well, I'll just put it out there. No to an elected mayor, who wants to debate.
Well, before we take any actions, what the city attorneys pointed out is like, the Brown Act requires us to take public comment before we take any actions. So, we can't vote anything to take public comment.
No, no.
But she can make the motion.
I'm just doing it, I can make a motion, and there can be discussion, and then you can go to public comment, correct? At least, that's my understanding of the Brown Act. But, I'm not really making a motion.
You're just kicking things off?
I didn't say I make a mo, I said, I'll just put it out there and move the discussion. That's all I was doing.
Maybe the public can get us rolling.
Okay. Whatever your pleasure is.
Herman, it's up to you. Are we ready for public comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have four speakers in person, and one caller. Beth Brooks.
Hi, I'm Herbert.
Okay, okay. Herbert, Herbert Milano.
Thank you, members of the committee. In, whenever I'm faced personally with a difficult problem, I try to figure out, how do I simplify this, to get it clear? So, I'm going to ask you, what is the problem that you want to solve with this action? Because if you don't have an answer right away, off the top of your head, then the answer is no. You have no problems that you want to solve with this action. Then what are the negatives? And that's, I think, that what you should try to avoid with regard to an elected mayor. Because in my experience, and 25 years of basically being at city council and talking, we had one year, one city council basically was refusing to let me speak. That same gentleman, when we had meetings in this room, and they opened the door, the air flowed in, like I smelled the alcohol in his breath. You get one bad council member, right, today, and you basically hold off for one year, and you get the next one the following year, and you get a sense of relief. You get the wrong person elected, and then for as long as you want, two, three, four years, you're going to have to tolerate that situation. So, that's the reason why I would suggest, let's leave it alone, right? We have this rotating system. But if we have six years, you could demand that maybe the mayor could be selected on year number three, right? And then rotate, in that manner, and you have a flavor of different individuals, with different attitudes, and different styles, and different approaches, and different areas of interest that will bring up, because they control the agenda, and that's big. The, with regard to council districts, and I don't know if I should bring it up, again, what is the problem that you want to solve? The council districts of the city of Los Angeles are bigger than the city of Glendale. One council, right, each council district. So, what is it that we want? Do we want to continue to fragment the city of Glendale, the same way we're fragmented, the national situation that we have? We're going through more and more fragmentation. We should be thinking about uniting, and bringing people together, and really thinking cohesively as to what we want. It's the process of governance that we need to look at. What we have generally works okay, and if we change, look at the other cities that have different types of styles of governance, you know, with regard to council districts and so forth, they're no better off financially, they're no better off in fixing the roads, or fixing the sidewalks, or getting more parks, and so forth. It's the process that we bring in, the quality of individuals that get hired, or that get selected and elected. So, that's my recommendation. Unless you have a burning issue, don't change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Brooks.
I'd like Herbert to go first. I think he's right. It's like, what are you trying to solve with having an elected mayor? I understand what you're trying to solve with the mayoral selection, because the past two years was, was a sideshow. So, I think that maybe you're trying to not have another sideshow, which would mean changing the ordinance, throwing the ordinance out, or actually having a straight rotation, which is Edmond Hakopian's suggestion. So, number one, just what he said, do not, do not have an elected mayor. I think that you would be stuck with somebody who could be a problem for four years. Rotation is fine, but you also have to, I think personally, remove the decision of the city council to choose that mayor, because you've seen that they abused that choice. And they did backroom deals, there was a lawsuit, and you don't want to have a Jerry Springer show again. And the way you eliminate that, is you literally take five people, and you divide it up into the four-year term, and you give everybody a rotation. And the person who got there first is the last mayor, you let people still be mayor in the, in, if they're going to be elected the next year. You get the decision-making out of it. And I think the reason you have to do that, is because of what happened in the past two years. If people actually know, that they bypassed the person who was next in line, and then, you know, you would come to the city council meeting, and their family was there, and all of a sudden, it's somebody else. Because they made deals, you know, when they went to the bar, and when they had coffee together, and all of a sudden, people are blindsided. You don't want that. I don't believe personally, the city council can be trusted doing that, and I think that this should be a lesson. They lost the public trust. The way to regain public trust is to remove the decision-making out of it, just like where we discussed about the salaries. Remove as much as possible of the public to second-guess you, and to distrust you, and that you could play political games, and make it as clean and objective as possible. And I think the only way you do that is with this rotation, that's Edmond's idea, and also, absolutely do not elect a mayor. Look at the cities that have elected mayors. I don't see that, that, I think they're worse off than we are, because our elected mayor, our selected mayor is a little bit, not impotent, but you know, they don't have much more power than the council members, and I think that's a very good thing. Because power can corrupt, and I don't think you should give that power to one person, particularly for four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Dish.
Chair Flower, committee members, thank you again. My name's Alan Dish. The hour is late, but I want to insist, yes, for a mayor, I think, elected, but no on districts. Why? I think, in today's complex situation, we need strong leadership. Now, it's true, three of the former mayors have been accused of being dictatorial. Our current, the president even, of the country is being accused of that also. I am not so opposed, though, if I may say this, about the form of even President Trump's actions, in the sense that, although I disagree of, on how he's behaving, I mean, on which issues, but dictatorial approaches will be needed. Even FDR, I insist on this, was criticized by his detractors at the time for being too dictatorial. By that, I mean by passing Congress, making certain decisions that need to be made for ecology, for other issues that are urgent. That's why I think, when it comes to issues that we will be facing, it's possible that a directly elected mayor is not such a bad idea. Because, again, the current situation is causing controversy, so what's to say that it won't keep going on if we don't change it? Now, my pessimism of democracy, of course, I come to this point, let's face it, I love democracy. That's why I'm participating because of it. We should use it when we can. My issue with, and then I will stop, local, how are we calling it, local democracy, districting, along with how Mr. Milano wonderfully said, fragmentation, balkanization, yes, that could occur, is another issue, what am I trying to say? That, at the heart of this issue is, I think, a leftist dream, which is very sincere, of, again, locally representative democracy, where everything, you debate everything you know. But, now I will quote, not a conservative, but a quite leftist guy, Trotsky, who said at some point, that he is opposed, he said basically, would you really like to live in society where you have to debate, how do you organize kindergarten? How do you organize? No, like, I'm for alienation, in a good sense, where things function, water is here, electricity is here, you don't have to debate it all the time. That's my issue with having local communities debate everything, is you need strong state, state support for that to happen. I wanted to mention, South Glendale at some point attempted to succeed. In the '30s, it was a very, I think, interesting history. I don't have time, though, to go into it. That's another issue, though, that could come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Edmond.
Hello, everyone. My name is Edmond Hakopian, and I wanted to address the committee on two topics, districting and the mayoral selection. I think the committee and the mayor should always put the interest of the residents first, and they should be unified around the mayoral selection. Because the mayor is the spokesperson for the entire city. Over the past two years, it created conflict. So, it's a simple math question. We have five council members, they all want to be mayors, and we have only four-year terms. So, if you, if we break down those four years into five terms, which would be 9.6 months, they all can be mayors, and there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any conflict. It would be a rotation, and it would make things simpler. Now, district, on the topic of districting, sometimes we see other cities, and we think they have a good structure, but if you actually go and attend their meetings, neighborhood councils, their city council meetings, or talk to their residents, you would see the ones that have districts, they have problems. Several years ago, I had to interact with Jose Huizar, who's a felon, and he's in the federal prison now, for corruption. He was a council member for Boyle Heights, and when you have a district, and you have one council person for that district, you're stuck with that person for, for four years, or whatever the term limit is. The beauty of the Glendale City Council election is, we all, as a city, elect five people. And they all, based on our voting parameters, they are all qualified. So, when you create districts, basically, you, you pin citizens and council members against each other, and all they do, they start fighting for resources for their district. So, you create micro-cities within a city. And that goes against the goal of unifying the city, and that's, that concludes my comment. I'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair, we have two callers.
Okay.
Vartan, you're live with the Charter Review Committee. You have three minutes.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Vartan Jihanian. I'm a longtime Glendale resident, a civil service commissioner, and a government affairs professional with three decades of experience. I'm calling to strongly oppose the creation of city council districts in Glendale. Having worked across local, state, federal, and international government levels, and in cities that operate with district-based councils, I can assure you that this change would create, would be a grave mistake. In district-based cities, when residents face issues, their only option is to seek help from their single council member. If that council member is ineffective or unresponsive, residents have nowhere else to turn. Other council members focused on their own districts generally will not intervene. This dynamic creates frustration, limits accountability, and fractures community representation. This proposal, if enacted, would go down in Glendale's history, as one of the worst decisions ever made by the city, for the, for the residents of our community. Glendale deserves a unified city council that represents the entire city, not divided districts that pit neighborhoods, neighborhoods against each other, and weaken our collective voice. I urge you to reject this proposal decisively, and preserve at-large elections for the benefit of all residents of Glendale. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Teal, you are on the air with the Charter Review Committee. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members. I'd like to say that I would love for both the elected mayor's decision and council districts to be brought to the people, with the pros and cons of each. I'm listening to people have their concerns about districts. I've worked alongside on an issue before, with a former council member who was over the district of Silver Lake at Water Los Feliz, and we had tremendous success. Now, it was during COVID, so I do say people had time on their hands, but we had tremendous success in some, in a mission that we were accomplishing, that was a big problem during COVID. There were people, there were staffing to help that particular council member at the time. It was smooth sailing, they had me looped in, we worked collectively and together, and it kind of propelled me forward to getting more involved in Glendale, in which I did with being part of the tenant landlord committee. I would just like to see it proposed to the public. I think I'd like to see a different type of point, you know, field, playing field for the community. And I think it doesn't have to be, if we have districts, it's going to be bad because of LA. I don't look at it like that. I mean, change can be good, and it can be good for all the right reasons, for several reasons, but I'd like to see, definitely, it proposed to the public, with pros and cons, and just see how it pans out. I definitely would love to see a shorter time for the council members. I'd love to see people that have, that represent from age, socioeconomic, race, all of that. And people who are willing to put boots on the ground. I think at large, we don't really know what council members are tackling. And I have always said, I am a firm believer of boots on the ground, being familiar with your community, and the people who reside in the community, and all of the people that reside in the community. Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you. Chair, those are all of the speakers.
All right. Thank you to all the members of the public who took time to hear us talk about this again, and to share your views. I think there's more of you here than the first time we talked about it. So, with that, we are back. I was trying to break this down into pieces, for separate digestion, but it seems like we're going to try to swallow the thing whole. we're going to try to swallow the thing whole. So I'll just open it up. Maybe we'll start over here this time. Yep, well.
We're not voting, right?
No, this is just, I want to hear from everybody before we decide to vote, if we could just hear what everybody has to say.
I thought more about this, and I think I'm, in terms of the districts and no districts, I'm for no districts, again. Probably, I believe that those people who have to be elected, they should be able to be elected by majority of the people instead of section, of group of the city, and not be responsible for their districts, but be responsible for the city and everybody that the city includes. So that's my thoughts, and I am opposed to elected mayor. I think what we have, if it works well in terms of people doing their jobs and rotation, I am for rotation as well. So that's where I'm going to probably vote for.
Denise?
So this, we're, we're taking both of them at the same time?
The floor is open.
Free fall? Okay. So here's the interesting thing, I really feel like I've been on the debate team for the last 30 days, frankly. I mean, let's be real about what's, you know, even in listening to our callers and listening to the feedback from our public, what's really, I just want to put out there, and I'll tell you where I'm going on my vote and where I stand, but what I really want to put out there is, you know, you received a letter from the tenants' union, that was a, we were suggested to reach out to them, and they did reach back to us. They've built an effective case for districts. Equally so, I've heard as much from people who can build effective cases as people who tell you why it won't work. And whether we want to see it that way or not, there's validity to both arguments. However, when we come down to where now, just narrowing it down, so I, that's why I feel like it's a debate team. I could truly go down the path, I mean, a month ago, well, in 2024, I wasn't for it, and then I went down the path 30 days ago and really took to heart all of our public comments and what the tenants' union said and went for it. Then I heard from a whole host of other people and was not for it, back to being for it. So, again, I don't want to belabor, it's going to be a long night, but I just want you to know that I, I really, really think this is something that the public gets to weigh in on. That being said, now let's narrow it down to the city of Glendale. And I think that, you know, in talking with, with thinking through and leaning on much wiser people, I think there are some, some major issues and priorities in Glendale. Doesn't mean districting's not important, doesn't mean it's not where we should go, but we have some major issues that, that to me is where we want our council to focus, whether it's budget, whether it's electricity rates, whether it's paying for those electricity rates on credit cards. You know, there's a lot of people who are suffering in our city based on our distraction, our distraction of where people are on different things, and so we need to bring it back and narrow that. That being said, because of the city's priorities, I can't in this time and good conscious vote for districts. I just can't. That being said, to your second request from us, I really, really think it's critical, I mean, we were 50-50 as a vote, I wasn't here, we were 50-50, we have to listen to the numbers in the room. All the people that spoke to me, there's a case to be built either way. We have to take that into consideration. We heard from a caller who said, put it to a vote. If I could vote no and say, okay, tell council to put it to a vote, that's exactly how I think. As a resident on this committee, because I had to come back to where I'm at as a resident and not just a person who's been appointed to the community, as a person who lives here, I have to be fair and say, yeah, I was a renter in North Glendale, yes, I found a path to purchase a home, but you know what? I don't know the lived experience for the people who live in Rancho. I don't know the lived experience for the people who live in South Glendale. I don't know what their streets are like, how many more parks they don't get. I know it because I got really excited when I ran my own campaign and found out how great all these different things are in our city. But we have to hear that voice that people want representation. So even though I'm voting no, there is a path for council to put more, I'm only voting no because there's bigger priorities for our city. Right now, this will distract where our city needs to go to get fiscally in line and what we need to focus on, but there's a way for our city to take the concept, to listen to people. They can either put it on the ballot if they want, or they can also think very specifically about how to give people that representation, how to make the tenants feel like that they have more of a voice about the areas where they live, about the issues that matter to them. And that's, that's pretty much where my, so no to the mayor, no to the districts, and I want to be really clear that my decision on that is based on where I think we are going as a city in the next four years and how I think, I'm not opposed to districts at all. I could literally put me on the debate team coach for that side, I would do a knock-up job over there, but I'm telling you, it's, it's just an economic decision for me right now for our city, where I, where I fall down on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Because I think there's probably some confusion in the public, I just wanted to quickly reiterate that this will go to the public. This committee is only making a recommendation to council, council doesn't have to follow its recommendation, and council can always decide to move forward with districting and an elected mayor. If they do, that's a charter amendment, it has to go on the June 2028, I'm sorry, yeah, 26th ballot. So, you know, the voters will have the choice if the council decides to proceed with that. We're not making that decision. I went to all of those council districting meetings and demographic presentations and attended some of the public workshops on what maps should look like or could look like in districts. And I think, you know, council's decision, majority decision, was they wanted to proceed with putting six districts and an elected mayor, that would not be a powerful mayor, on the ballot for the last election, and they blew past the deadlines for getting that on the ballot, and then they formed this committee. And, you know, I would like to see the motions combined. I can't separate districts from an elected mayor, and I know the council's thinking was, six districts and an elected mayor, the rationale being you'd have seven people on council with equal votes, and, and the mayor would be elected at large and could be someone people could go to if they didn't feel represented by their individual district council person. So I wonder if, you know, that's a start, starting place for the motion in terms of sort of following what council itself was proposing for a ballot measure, rather than trying to come up with every permutation possible. I have not been in favor of council districts unless courts require Glendale to go to a district system from an at-large system. I'm not in favor of it. One reason is, I think we're a medium-sized city that, where the residents really have more in common than some other cities like LA, where there's such, such unbelievable, you know, strata in terms of economics and, you know, neighborhoods. And I like the fact that, you know, an at-large system, you've got five, potentially five council members to go to, you're not limited to one in your district, and I think it's a much more opportunity in that system for residents to lobby their council people and make their opinions known. And I certainly know that certain members of the council are more receptive to my comments, and there have been council members who I don't think even listen. And I wouldn't want a council member who's not willing to listen to a resident in their district to be my district council member, and that's the flaw I see with districts, is you get one representative who may not even give you the time of day, and it happens. So that's my position. Thank you.
So when I joined this committee, my intention was to gather as much information about districting and learn more about it, and to know more, to make more, an educated decision. And with my background in, in math and engineering, I've looked at numbers and statistics and some proof for districting, but unfortunately, I haven't been able to. So I tend to agree with the committee members before me, so I don't want to belabor some of these points that were already been made, but I would, at this point, I still haven't found out a reason for us, for our city to go into districting, so I would have to say no to districting, and as a result, to the elected mayor as well. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. I've been on the fence on this, because I can see both sides. I, you know, having somebody who would represent my area of the city or represent the downtown district would be a very helpful thing to a lot of things. That's when the Glendale Tenants Union, you know, they would like some representation. It is an expensive thing to run at an at-large election. It would save a little money for people who wanted to run in districts. I attended a lot of the workshops and the city council meetings regarding this, and as Denise said, I can see both sides, I'm willing to go either way. I tend to lean toward districts, just because I feel that it could easily help my area of the city and the downtown district especially.
Carl? Oh, I don't know that I'm going to repeat everything, so I think we're rehashing what we did a few months ago, and I don't know that, that much is, is going to change. Look, there are people on both sides of the, both sides of the equation here, and they're all good people, and, and I think they all, you know, and they're all trying to figure out what they think is best for the city. I spent a long time in the city, I spent a long time trying to, trying to pull, make sure communities work together, but I still have real, real concerns with districts. And then usually when I talk to somebody who's in favor of districts, and you say, well, look at Los Angeles, or look at this city, it's like, oh, well, that city's not a good, a good example. Well, why is that, why is that not a good example? Because there are issues that come up with districts. You know, I can look at it from a staff perspective, and it's like going, okay, if you divide the city into six districts and, you know, political people have their needs and certain things that need to be addressed in their districts, and I think, we routinely see it in the, in the, that small suburb of Los Angeles ourselves, they want certain things out of department heads, well, how do you allocate the resources? We are a medium-sized city, and I think we need to allocate the resources in what we think is best for the city. I could also see you end up in a district where the district, maybe your issue is a minority issue within the district, but it may not be a minority issue within the city. So depending how you draw hillsides or where things go and fire maps and all that, you could be a minor, you could be a minor issue to a particular district, but that could be a really big issue to the, to the rest of the city as we look at what happened with fires and stuff, and it's like going, that should be a concern of, of everybody in the city, and you may have to, you know, whereas, you know, two or three little bits and pieces in the council members, as Mr. Durham said, doesn't give you the time of day, because, you know, other people want something different, I think when you have an at-large system to do that. I think there's a message when you, when you see something from Glendale tenants that they want some representation, and that's fair of them to ask, and I think we got to look at how our governance, our governance is. And there's always this fine line between, it ain't broke, don't fix it, and just changing things in order to change things up. But this is a monumental decision for the city, and I think it comes with, with some significant consequences if it's, if it, if it changes and it's, and it's not done well. I don't want to see the city become more divisive, I really want to see the city pull itself together. When you look at districts and, you know, at least I guess the demographers are looking at, you know, whether it's ethnic or socioeconomic makeup and stuff, you know, it's kind of interesting, it's hard to do that in Glendale. And I grew up thinking that was a good thing. It's like you can't go draw, draw a quarter that it's like, it's a particular ethnic group. You know, you can go to New York or Chicago and you can find, you know, little districts as like, you know, districts that have a particular identity, and, you know, that adds to the cultural flavor, but it's like, man, you look at Glendale, and it's like everybody is, is intermixed with each other, and I grew up thinking that was, that was a good thing. And that's one of the things I think I really appreciate about Glendale, is, hey, we got to focus on issues. Commissioner Miller's point, so we got some significant issues to face as, as a city, from our budgets to some of our power plant, our power plant and power cost-related issues, there are some things we really do need to focus on, and those are going to be citywide issues, and I think everybody needs to be able to weigh in. I think we're better off if we make those decisions there. So if you're asking me for my recommendation, I'm still no on districts and no on elected mayor.
I have a few points, please be patient. I think our cities are already fragmented regardless of where the city council comes from, and that shows from our zoning and environmental issues, and I'm just going to bring this point up again. The environmental justice element draft is out, please take a look at that and understand where our issues are, and it's typically in South Glendale, and there's a reason for that, and that dates back way, way before us. So we're already fragmented per whatever the map shows, so bringing in new council members is not going to make it more fragmented, it's already there. I do appreciate looking at the economics of the city if we do take on this project, but not everything can be measured economically, because when we do that, typically, the most vulnerable are always left out. So if this is the problem, if the most vulnerable already left out due to not having district representation, not having this option for them will also make it worse. And then just, I guess like a, an example from Pasadena, because I work there, it's districted in Pasadena, and because it's districted, one of the district council members brought up creating a specific plan in his district that didn't exist before. If we, if he didn't do that, that wouldn't have happened, and some of the policies that were created wouldn't have been specific to that district. And, I mean, they're good policies, in my opinion, but it's, it's things like that that can come up when you have that option of districting. And then in terms of the mayor, I agree, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be separate from the rest of the motion, only because if, if we don't have districts, I don't think there's a point to an elected mayor, but I would support an elected mayor, and again, just bringing Pasadena into, into context here, after the fires and after, well, even now with the ICE problem, you need a strong mayor there to represent the people, and for someone to go to when it's not a district issue, it's a whole city issue. And having that face there more than one year, I think is important when it's these type of events that happen. Thanks.
Without a doubt, it's a very difficult decision. I thought of both pros and cons, but at the end of the day, I think it comes down to my personal belief, and my personal belief is that I think fundamentally, a society's better when people are easier to participate in the system, and by that measure, districting is a better system, in my opinion, so I'm gonna go for the districting with the condition that we in- So I'm going to go for the districting with the condition that we increase the number of, like, the seats. Right now, it's five. I think that's too little. I think it should be at least seven. And in terms of mayor, I am not for the elected mayor.
Paul? Okay, thanks. So I just want to say I appreciate the way we've deliberated over this. It's been a long road. So I'm going to try not to echo some of the things that have already been said, and I'll focus on things that I think haven't been said. The one thing that I do want to point out is the scale of the challenges, and I'm not going to call them problems. They're just, they're challenges, but they're, as Carl said, monumental challenges and monumental decisions. We have a huge budget issue looking down the line for the next five years. We're drawing on our reserve funds and in some cases below the levels that we are targeting. We have aging infrastructure. We have rising energy costs. We have a new fire map that came out, and a lot of neighbors are losing their insurance. My point is, we have very broad citywide issues, and they need to be deliberated in a broad and citywide way. If someone can convince me today that shifting to districts and shifting to a generally-elected mayor would lead to better decisions rather than fragmentation, rather than parochialism, rather than hyper-local issues, if you can convince me that that would allow us to solve all these issues in a more cohesive way, by all means. I haven't heard that yet. I haven't even heard anything close to that. So, you know, for that reason, I can't support going to districts. I can't support a generally-elected mayor because they do go hand-in-hand. And, look, we're a city that's shrinking. You know, districts make sense if you're the size of LA, if you're the size of Chicago, you're the size of San Francisco, where, you know, maybe at that point, you could consider it. Personally, I think if you're that big, the city needs to be broken up. But it doesn't, that's not going to help us solve our problems here. I think this is a solution, looking for a problem that doesn't exist.
We're kind of voting in slow motion. It's going to spoil the vote. No, thanks everyone for hanging on. I think that rather than looking at the immediate problems, I think this fix with districts is looking towards the government. You want to have 10, 15 years down the line. For me, that's always the solutions that are more responsive, representative, and democratic. For me, the most convincing thing is that a council member can go lobby, you know, petition 2,000 people instead of 20,000 people, get to know the people, run a much cheaper election. That makes a city council that is more representative of the people. And I just think it functions a little better. It functions the way people kind of imagine a city government to work, and then a good counterbalance to that is to have one at-large elected mayor to kind of balance it out. Just makes sense to me. I think it's simple. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Linda?
Okay, so I think everyone has made very valid points. I'm to a point that I've been torn in between two options. I'm open to change if that's going to make the situation we currently have better and make everyone feel more included and give them the opportunity to participate in the election. However, I have not seen many candidates from the areas that we keep talking about, South Glendale. And just looking back at the number of people who even tried to run, it has been a very small number. And I'm not convinced that funding has been the only issue because majority of the candidates fundraised to be able to run. So I would think if a strong candidate shows up, they would have the support of the people and they can run. So districting shouldn't be, districts shouldn't be the only factor to bring that candidate in. There should be commitment to community, willingness to serve, there should be some level of interest in policy, and more for someone to participate in the elections. And I'm not seeing that many number of candidates or even the interest level from them. And that being said, I, seeing the tenants' union email that was sent to us, I appreciate that they put the time, and I'm very happy to see that we are able to communicate, even though we might not agree and see everything eye to eye at the moment. And I'm saying at the moment because five years from now, we might be in a different situation and we all might decide differently. But right now, I don't have enough reasons to say that I want to go towards districting the city. I do not want to see our city more divided. I think districting would cause that. I do not want us to lose focus, as committee member Miller mentioned, and forget the whole picture and lose focus on, limit our focus on broader issues. And I think right now, we have that ability to communicate to five different people. We have the ability to, they all have to discuss topics and think about areas that are not within a district and are not relevant to their neighborhood only or their area only. So with that, I conclude that I'm not for districting at the moment. Or you're in this?
All right, well, thank you, everybody. And I mean that sincerely. It's been said before by others here, another night, that the people on this committee have come to this table in good faith and open minds and fair discussion, heard each other out. And this is the model. This is the model for what local government's supposed to be. So I appreciate it, and I take a certain honor in having been a part of it. That said, some of you are just wrong. But that's okay. I'm not going to belabor this with all the arguments. I want to address two things that have come up tonight that, and then I'll kind of back off and just cleanly state where I stand. One, I don't think that this discussion, particularly about the separately-elected mayor question, has anything to do with the recent issues that have been before the councils elected mayors the last two years. To my recollection, the decision to form a charter review committee or to consider a separately-elected mayor predate both the last two mayor selections. This is not about that, in my mind. It may color it for other people, but to me, we are, as Brian said, we're looking forward. That's point one. Point two, I'm uncomfortable with accepting an argument that says we must maintain the status quo because the status quo is the city has problems. If the city has problems, then something should be done. And if, I'm not saying that expanding the size of the council would necessarily cure the financial issues that the city's facing, but you can't say that doing nothing is going to cure the financial situation the cities are facing. So I kind of, I chafe at that argument even if I respect the sentiment that underlies it. So I am supportive of districts. I'm in support of expanding the council to seven seats. I think there should be six council districts and a separately-elected mayor. I think the mayor should serve a term of four years. I'm generally not in favor of term limits, but if people insisted that there should be a term limit on mayor, I would say three terms, but I would accept two. I think that if there's a separately-elected mayor, that separately-elected mayor's powers and duties should be as outlined in the proposed motions, paragraphs two and three. If I were to make a motion, that would be my motion. And the last thing I'll say is, it occurred to me after the last time we addressed this issue when we deadlocked Five Five, that, wow, that's basically a failed motion, which means there's no recommendation going forward. But to me, it also says, that, to me, says, "We need to take the question out of the room." We have sat here for months debating it in the right way, and we couldn't, we're still evenly divided. And to me, this is, we shouldn't, we shouldn't keep the question from everybody else. So even, I would say that even if I were against going to districts and a separately-elected mayor, I would still want it on the ballot. I would still want to, given the outcome in this room with as closely divided as we are, even if we may reach a majority one way or the other tonight, I still think it should go to the people and that they should vote on it. Because, you know, reasonable minds can disagree, but there's got to be a way of settling it. I don't think that we should be the ones to say that nobody else should get to decide. And I know the council gets to make that decision. That's their decision. But they asked us what our opinion was. So we do have a responsibility, and I fully expect them to take our recommendation seriously and give it weight. So it means something.
Chair Flower, I would just, if I may, I would just like to respond twice to you on things. I want to be really clear before we get to the end of the night since I started and I did identify, I called it priorities, so, because, you know, in the work that I do, the problems are just to be solved. I voted against it because of the priorities facing the city. I want to be clear. I'm very clear on my words. Otherwise, saying, you know, throwing in the argument of it's just problems is somewhat dismissive because I take on very hard and heavy tasks, as I believe this entire committee has. So I want to be clear that my reasoning is priorities. Equally so, you and I are more aligned than, I don't know if you realize, in that I do want comments to go back to council. I do want council to see this tenants' unit letter. There's a lot of them. They have an important voice, and representation is a very important, of all the pros and cons, the one I can really deduct it down to is representation. I do think we could do better to hear from all the people in our very diverse community. That's for something that council can look at that doesn't have to be districts, that doesn't take us away from our priorities of budget, fire safety, electrical. There is a way to get to where people want. Districts could maybe come back to in '28 or in '30. We have exhausted this and given a playbook to many future councils to address this. I don't even know if they'd have to put a charter commission together. But the point being is, is I think we can still send comment regardless of the vote. I didn't, I wasn't left with the impression that if we say no recommendations, we're not giving comments. And then my last and final reason for asking that of staff is because the, it's split. The argument can be, can be really brought out both ways. Effectively, my vote was because of the priorities of where the city is, but I still think that council needs to hear all the reasons why we should go to district. Ultimately, it's their decision, and to put it on the ballot is their decision.
Chair?
They've just asked us for a recommendation. That's, thank you.
So... To clarify, my final point was not simply that we should give our comments to the council. I think absolutely everybody should go to the council meetings when they discuss this. My point was that, or my hope would be, is that even if you are not in favor of some of these changes, that you could see past what your personal preference is to see that is in the interest of the people, to allow them to answer the question. That's all. I'll put it there. At this point, I would hope that somebody would put forth a motion. I've stated what I thought a motion would be, but I'm not going to make a motion at this point.
I'd like to make a motion.
I put in two parts. I'm interested in the election for mayor and district.
I'm sorry, no, this, it was clear that this is one item. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to reject the two resolutions that are before us. One being, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't, I'm sorry, and I tried to pull it up, it disappeared from the website, so...
I understand. So what I think I'm hearing, based on your comments, would be that the charter review committee recommend that the council not place on the ballot an amendment to the city charter transitioning from at-large to district, as well as not placing on the ballot a measure, an amendment to the charter establishing the office of mayor separately elected from members of the city council.
That's my motion.
Second?
Can I ask for clarification?
So that's the extent of your motion. You express no opinion as to if they were to put such a ballot measure out there, what your preference would be?
I think you bring up a really good point, Chair Flower, and I think I made this point at the last time we deliberated this. We now have created volumes of material, audio recordings, and video recordings. If they're so inclined, they can watch and read, and they can get all the opinion and then some. So my motion stands.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd add is, or say to that, is the committee's free to make another, you know, assuming this passes, the committee's free to make another motion on, if there's no recommendation, we still think you should consider these things, or if the council decides to put these things on the ballot.
A notwithstanding motion. I would just recommend that we do that another night because I'm not, this is going to go on for hours if we try to draft another resolution right now.
All right. There's a motion, the second, on the table. Are there any other questions, or shall I call the vote? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Can you clarify your motion?
Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify the motion? The motion is that the charter review committee recommend that the council not place on the ballot an amendment to the city charter transitioning from at-large, an at-large method to elect members of the council to a district-based method of election, and not place on the ballot an amendment to the city charter establishing the office of mayor separately elected from members of the city council. So basically, not going to districts and not having a directly-elected mayor.
Would it be worth flipping it to avoid the double negative in case it's confusing people?
I think the point's made. Are we clear on the motion? All right, roll call, please.
Committee Member Durham?
Yes.
Caribbean?
No.
Paratunian?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Manasarian?
Yes.
Meek?
No.
Megardichian?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Povolitis?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
You?
No.
Flower?
No. I didn't count.
Seven, five.
Okay, motion carries. All right. The next topic, our future agendas, I have two items I would like to see on the future agendas. One is a discussion of whether to move our regular meeting time back from 5:00 to 5:30. I had two members who've expressed that they've had difficulty getting here because they have jobs, and, which is why we should pay the council more, because people have to miss work to do this stuff. And I would also like to bring back the consideration of the contingent, notwithstanding motions, the, notwithstanding the fact that the committee is voting to recommend that council not put these issues on the ballot if they choose to do so, notwithstanding that recommendation, whether or not to offer further recommendation as to the number of districts, the size, and the separately-elected mayor question. So what the system should look like if the council decides to put it on? If the council ignores what this committee has voted on. Once they ignore, disagree with.
Chair Flower, didn't you also ask, maybe I heard it incorrectly, I thought there was also a ask regardless of the vote for us to give, so should council choose to not accept our vote either way, we were going to at least, will we be doing a summary? Like, how is council going to know that the Glendale Tenants Union wrote this letter?
Well, if I may, just from a staff level, when we, when we take, and we were, at the end of the meeting, we were going to just, we were going to do a check-in with the council once we got this decision in terms of where the committee landed on this recommendation. Maybe at the end of September, maybe we'll bring this second part of it back before we do that, just so that they, because if they're going to move forward on it... because if they're going to move forward on the district piece, there's still some public outreach components we need to complete. So certainly, when we do that, and then when we bring back the subsequent report later, early into next year, any public feedback that you've gotten as a committee, as well as what the summary of the deliberation was by the committee, would certainly be presented to the council in a format that they'd be able to digest, and some council members, I'm sure, will go back and watch all of the meetings.
Thank you.
I have a couple agenda items I'd like to bring up. We've heard it today, and we've heard it at least one or two other prior meetings, discussion over two items, first being a generally-elected city attorney and an appointed treasurer. We've had enough people bring up this matter, it makes sense to me to discuss it, it's certainly part of the charter, so I think it's important that we discuss that.
I agree.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All right. If there's no opposition. We also need to get moving on the civil service stuff. I imagine that's the next big topic we have. What is staff's thoughts on that?
Well, we were exploring the possibility of bringing that to you in your September meeting, but given that we have some other items, and we would, and I still have to circle back with the chief human resources officer to see if we're going to be able to make that timeline or bring in October.
Well, I don't think the discussion of the meeting time is going to take very long, and honestly, the districting question, I think we can handle pretty quickly at this point.
I think, right, I think certainly we can have it on the agenda and be ready to make it, to provide.
If we can just get the presentation rolling on.
Exactly, and at least we'll be ready to make a presentation of what our current system is, and then there'll have to be future discussions on the changes.
That would be welcome.
Just for housekeeping, I think we're starting to build a list of things that we want to talk about, because we've done this for a few meetings. Would it be possible to maybe, at the next meeting, get that list, and maybe an idea of when you think we might be getting to those? Just, because as I said, I know we've got the civil service, I know we've had other things, and we're adding to that list, so just so we, for housekeeping purposes.
Paul, would you mind if we deferred on the city attorney and treasurer question till after we've at least started in on the civil service question, since that was something we were specifically asked to do? I think we could do it together, because they're kind of tied, because, so, the reason why I just don't want to delay it is there's enough people here on the committee who have interest in it, there's certainly enough people in the public who have interest in it, so it deserves a fair discussion.
And I'm just trying to deal with priorities, not say it shouldn't be on the agenda, I agree, it should be discussed.
But to your point, it's a council priority, as articulated in their instructions to us, but I'm hearing the public speak, and it's a public priority on those items, so that's how I'm going.
Fair enough.
We'll have all that on there, and the council can, I mean, the committee can decide at the next meeting which ones to prioritize.
Okay. Which, to be clear, the next meeting, we'll be getting at 5:00, because we can't change it tonight, so.
I think changing it to 5:30 is a good thing to do.
Yeah, well, we'll have a discussion at the next meeting.
We can't take an action on that tonight. I know, commentary.
All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order?
Yes.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Thank you. What do you got?
I was waving over here, but you kept looking that way.
Okay, anyway, I just wanted to bring up that it is August already.
I know.
And originally, I thought that this committee was supposed to finish in December. I hear that we can possibly extend it, but there's a lot to do on this charter, and we need to discuss if we're going to extend it, whether we're going to meet more often, have subcommittees, whatever, I think that should be brought up.
Meeting time and calendar.
Thank you.
Will do.
All right, if there's nothing else, thank you all, we are adjourned.